We are recording.
All right. Well, let's get the show on the road, shall we? So this is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, March 18th. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Just a reminder, anyone who comes forward to speak, please speak directly in the microphone, and we do need your name and address. So at this time, I would look for a motion to approve the evening's agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion from Trustee Rodden to approve the evening's agenda and a second from Trustee Romas. Is there any other further discussion or questions with regard to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number five is public appearances. So if there's anyone in the audience this evening who is here for an item not on the agenda, and you would like to speak to that item, please come forward, let us know what's on your mind, provide your name and address. Be aware that no action could be taken on that item tonight, but it could be referred back to staff. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to an item not on the agenda? All right, very good. Item number six this evening, item 6A is a Resolution 24005 acknowledging and thanking Ron Schlitz as Village of Swamaco Cemetery Sexton. And I guess I get to take this one. So... Is Mr. Schlitz here? Yes, you are. This is all for you. So Resolution 24005, a retirement resolution commending Ron Schlitz. The Board of Trustees of the Village Board of Swamaco, the Board of Trustees of the Village Board of Swamaco do resolve as follows. Whereas Ron Schlitz steadfastly and devotedly served the Village of Swamaco as Cemetery Sexton on and off since 1974, and whereas he also served when he was a child as an assistant while helping then Swamaco Cemetery Sexton Jim Vickery with spring and fall cleanup for a silver dollar, and then taking that dollar to Vickery's general store for some penny candy, and whereas over the last five decades was a member of the original Swamaco Cemetery Association, and as of 2018, a member of the Village of Swamaco Cemetery Committee, and whereas he provided exemplary service to both the town and village of Swamaco, having contributed to the formation and the evolution of the Swamaco Cemetery, and whereas he has helped hundreds of community members choose their final resting location for their loved ones and themselves, and where he has put blood, sweat, and tears into maintaining the Village of Swamaco Cemetery, and where he has never, and whereas he will never forget all of the people he considered friends whom he has helped to get their final resting place from his first full burial, Bill Ness, to the final one, Myra Valentine, and whereas he retired from the Village of Swamaco Cemetery Sexton position on December 31st, 2023, after several decades of service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Swamaco recognizes Ron Schlitz's faithful service with a commendation and expression of gratitude, and hereby makes this commendation a part of its official record. This, I am looking for a motion to be adopted today, this 18th day of March, 2024.
I will gladly make a Resolution 24005, a retirement resolution commending Ron Schultz, as presented. Thank you for your 50 years, sir.
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Trustee Rodden, seconded by Trustee Eckert, to approve Resolution 24005, a resolution commending Ron Schlitz for his long and storied career with the village as Cemetery Sexton. Any other further discussion? Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Your official commendations. And also, the village put this together, this is for you to go get some more candy. Although it's not Vickery story anymore, it's child's.
I don't know if it's four jobs.
Oh, you can now. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
And just for the record, that was six to zero. Six to zero.
Thank you.
All right. We are now off to... Here we go. 6B, welcome Reed Schmeckel, Certified Engineering Tech Director Smits.
All right, thank you. There's one correction there. It should be a civil engineering technician rather than certified, but he has plenty of certifications to go along with it, too. All right, Reed Schmeckel is our newest addition to the Public Works team as a civil engineering tech. He completed the NWTC Civil Engineering Program and has spent the last eight or nine years, I think it is, at McMahon Associates, where he primarily performed as a CAD designer. He's excited about his new position here to learn and be more of an intricate part of entire projects and see them through from start to finish, so we're involved in that. He brings some CAD experience that we definitely need here, too, to design and work our way through these projects from start to finish. CAD is also an intricate tool that we use in software program that takes years to learn and learn all the nuances to it. So having somebody that can walk in and already shown that he can take a hold of that CAD program and start putting design together is really, really nice and helpful. Please welcome Reed, and I promised him that we would limit only one question per village trustee tonight.
Ooh, that's going to be a problem. I had a list.
So if you have any questions, now's the time. He's available by phone or email, otherwise, if you want to learn more about him. But again, please welcome Reed here as our newest technician. We are back to full staff in the Engineering Department, so thankful for that as well, and ready to get rolling.
Thanks, Reed, for joining us. If, you know, just one, you know, potential suggestion. If you wouldn't mind staying a year before you entertain, you know, moving over to Howard, we'd appreciate that.
Couldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
I didn't say it, but thank you.
You couldn't.
Welcome, Reed.
Thanks. It's really good to have you aboard.
Welcome.
Did you sign that non-compete?
What's that?
That was a 10-year contract.
That's a 10-year contract. You're not going anywhere.
That was the third signature that they just put in front of you and said, "Don't read."
Yeah.
Thanks and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Reed.
That'll be the easiest meeting you ever have around here, just so you know. All right, moving on. Item number seven is a consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of, there is one change to it. In the Call to Meeting to Order notes, it was highlighted in there that board members present were Sky Van Rossum, Trustee Andrews, Trustee Eckert, Trustee Netto, and Trustee Romas has been added. And Trustee Andrews was removed as he was not here. So that's one change to the consent agenda. With that change, the consent agenda consists of previous minutes of the Village Board dated March 4th, 2024. Item B, January 2024 Animal Control Report. Item C, February 2024 Municipal Court Report. Item D, February 2024 Treasurers Report. Item E, February 2024 Recreation Report. Item F, February 2024 Fire Department Report. I had two questions on this that I would like to throw out, if possible. So the first question, and this goes to Chief Bertler, and maybe he can be prepared to just shoot me an email, but one of the things I noticed is a 60% increase in overall calls, and we're only, you know, in this portion of the year. I mean, we're barely into the year, and we're seeing a 60% increase in calls. So two things I'm wondering is, is there an explanation for those increasing calls? And the other question I have is, if this trend would continue, you know, what, and maybe this is a better question for you and Chief Bertler to have, Administrator, how does your budget look? Because if we're, for some reason, if this is going to be a trend, which, I don't know.
It's not ideal, but we'll keep responding to those calls.
Well, of course we will, but I just want to know, you know, is there something else behind it? The other question I had was for our Director of Parks and Recreation. So during the month of February, there were eight programs that I counted that took place here within the Village of Swamaco. Do you have a rough idea how many folks just generally attended those? I guess what I'm getting at is, on a month-to-month basis, when we look at this, I'm just wondering how many attendees we're having to our programs in general, not by specific program, but, you know, how many people are actually coming to the village and utilizing our programs?
Yeah, it's programs, you know, specific. It depends on the exact program you're talking about. I can break it down a little bit for you.
Just next time, or just in general. It can be a number, like, you know, the month of February, we had eight programs. We had 43 people who attended our programs, or whatever it might be.
Yep.
And then, Mr. President, I can give you some information from the Health and Safety Committee meeting, that Chief Bertler did state that the warm weather may have influenced the people getting out and doing yard work and having incidences. But that's, you know, something that he brought up at the Health and Safety.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions on the consent agenda?
On the whole, I'm fine with it, but the animal control's a little pricey.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Or a lot pricey.
Looked like there were a lot of calls. I think there was one situation that required six different follow-up visits. So I think if you look at that one visit, which I think was a neglect, if I remember reading it properly, neglect issue, there was six calls in a significant amount of time.
And I might add, Mr. President, that Matt is doing a really good job of staying on top of things and being a little bit more proactive and sending letters. So I do have to at least commend him for his efforts in, you know, making sure that he's doing his job.
And maybe, I don't know, maybe it was a warm, I don't know, but it is, I mean, we don't normally see bills of $900 on a monthly basis for animal control. Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I would love to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
So we have a motion from Trustee Rodden to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any other further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Moving on, we are at administrative items. Administrative item 8A this evening is Ordinance 2024-04, repealing Ordinance 2024-01 that created Section 2.11 Parent 1, Parent B, reducing the number of election inspectors. Clerk Bartletti.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. At the March 4th, 2024 Village Board meeting, staff was given direction to prepare an ordinance to repeal Swamaco Municipal Code 2.11 Subsection 1B that gives the village clerk, inspector, at the clerk's discretion, the authority to reduce the election inspector to no less than three inspectors per polling location. This authority was given to the village clerk on February 5th, 2024 Village Board meeting, where the Village Board took action to approve Ordinance 2024-01. This allowable action is defined in Wisconsin Statute 7.32. Change of election official numbers. The governing body of any municipality may reduce the number of election officials and modify or rescind any similar previous action. No such action may reduce the number of officials at a polling location to be less than three. If Ordinance 2024-04 is approved at the next Village Board meeting, the village clerk will schedule no less than five election inspectors per polling location. This is the first reading, so no action is necessary. But I do want to put out there that I, as the clerk, would not lower the election inspectors unless it was warranted, such as in Central Count, when we only have a couple hundred ballots that are returned. We know that ahead of a time, so that we could have the three election inspectors process those couple hundred within a reasonable time and be prepared for the eight o'clock closing. The only reason that we would lower that down to three was similar to what happened in February, where we had a very small election for Ward 5, which was only 247 registered voters. We did have the three election inspectors there. It worked out great. We still had the balance, the party balance. But I do understand that, as Trustee Romas has pointed out, that it is nice to have more people involved than less. So it truly is up to the Village Board on how you want to proceed.
I voted against it and brought it back because I think there should be at least five. I mean, it's not on Michelle. But I mean, years down the road, when there's different changes and different personnel, nobody's going to remember we did this. So I'd rather have the right ordinance in place.
I don't see the reason for the repeal. I mean, I think at the clerk's discretion, if there's a very small turn, I'll anticipate like there wasn't a pass. I think go with their advice, and the clerk is just trying to save us money, too. So I'm not sure why the repeal came about, but I'm not in favor of the repeal.
This is the first reading, so we have a second reading coming. Are there any issues with this document as it's written right now? We don't need to vote on it. We will be able to discuss it even further in its second reading and then vote whether to pass or not. Are there any questions or discussion with the verbiage as listed here on this item?
Well, I think I'm a little frustrated that it actually came back up, because we voted on it as a board, and now we're bringing it back up again. You know, I think it's ridiculous.
I brought it up.
Great. I think it's ridiculous. You know, this conspiracy theorist, you know, the village is going to try to do something awful, needs to stop. If we have an election like we just had, where there's a couple hundred registered voters, there's no reason to have five people there. They can handle it, you know, save the village money, and for someone, Michelle, that brings up money all the time and saving money for this village, for the little minute things, we are going to bring this up and say, "Well, no, we need to actually spend more money on our elections when it's not warranted or needed." So 100% will vote against this. This is 100% overreach. I think I believe in our clerk's ability. And furthermore, if the clerk wasn't doing what they should, we have a village administrator that they report to. Then, if the administrator's not doing what they're supposed to, there's a board that would get involved. So I don't think this is ever going to be abused. I think it was a great thing that Michelle, Clerk Bartletti, brought up, and I think we should stick with what we originally did.
This is hardly an issue of a conspiracy theory. It's just that particular election was a very, very small one, and it was a very small occurrence that we're going to have just a primary, just in the Pulaski part of our school district. It was very, very small. And down the line, when personnel change, it's just, it doesn't make sense to change a whole ordinance for one election and one person. Going down the line, we're not going to have to revisit this like we do with so many. It's in place, and it's good the way it was.
Well, actually, this new ordinance is in place right now, correct?
Correct.
The new ordinance is in place. So now we are actually changing it back to what it was that is not warranted or needed.
Well, that'll be for us to decide next time.
Good input. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say to Carrie, Clerk Bartletti said, "For me, one of the things I want to be careful of is that we're not treating our elections as an opportunity to save money." So the judgment is to go into five to three is perfectly fine, but it shouldn't be a situation where it's not properly budgeted for the five. Because I think our elections, if it comes down to it, the most fundamental thing that we can do and do well for our village and our republic is to have good elections, right? And sometimes that means people. And my point last week was like, okay, so you have an election that only needs three people. Well, that gives two people an opportunity, perhaps, to train, where they can learn how to do the system a little bit better. So the next time when we do have an election that's full of people, those people will be properly trained to handle it well. And it does get, you know, the flip side of that, though, is I also could understand how a person could like, you know, "You called me here. I gave up my day of work, and I'm not doing anything," you know? So I get that side of it, too. I understand both of those things. If I were to write this from scratch, I'm not even sure why we put a statutory number that's larger than the states, except for, from the experience of the clerk, which is we need five people at each polling location for each election, right, in a typical election?
In a typical election, it would be seven.
Seven.
For the presidential, we will have nine for polling location.
So it's a constant flux, right? So there's that motion that happens. Like I said last week, I don't even know how you guys, or how you, I don't know if it's completely on your shoulders, estimate the number of ballots even that you have to order. It blows me away that you can even do that. It's amazing, you know? That's meant to be a compliment, not an attack.
Thank you.
So for me, it's like having this extra set of hands there, just in case, as a human being, you miss ones, you know, maybe might be a good thing. So what I don't want to do, I guess, I'll leave it at this, I don't want to chase this as a money issue. We spend a lot of money in this village on things that are important, but having enough people so that we don't have long lines of voters going out of buildings, and we don't have problems with people not being able to cast their vote, I think is far more important as a government body, that we take care of that and make sure that's right before we pave some road, even.
And the absolute fact of the matter is, we're not going to be spending any more money. We're going to be spending the same, because she's not going to be using three in these upcoming elections anyway. It's not going to make any difference.
Anyone else with comments?
Well, as far as training, there's never a guarantee that people that worked it this year are going to work it next year.
Never a guarantee.
Never guarantee.
That's right.
All good points. We'll have a chance to revisit this one more time. All right. We are moving on to item 8B, which is the Resolution 24004, revising the fee schedule for village services, permits, and property use, short-term rental licenses. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So as promised, after the Village Board approved the Ordinance 2024-02, which implemented a licensing process for short-term rentals in the Village of Swamaco, the next step for the Board to take is set a fee for said license. And I did some research on surrounding communities that have it, and that is included in your packet. And so there is a resolution before you tonight for you to either adopt or reject. And if adoption, you would need to include what the amount will be for the first license and then any renewals, which could be the same or they could be different. I don't personally believe that there will be much difference between the annual and the renewal process, and you see most communities have the same price for each. And then I talked to our staff, who would be involved with the licensing process, talked about how long they would be working to implement this process. And between $200 and $250 for a license is a reasonable amount in our calculations.
As far as time and resources?
As far as time, correct.
So why is it 500, then?
Maybe they have a different process in those other communities, but for us, and what we think we'll be needing, that was our recommendation.
I understand.
Okay. Are there other questions for Administrator Kaker on this item?
How much was that going to cost again?
We estimate between 200 and 250.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly need to cover our costs. I might, you know, my thought on this is maybe to go a little bit higher, maybe go 280, and then 280 to renew as well, just to make sure that we don't have to increase the cost of this every year.
I'd agree.
Other input from board members?
I'm okay with that.
That sounds fair to me.
So I'll offer a motion to, I move to adopt Resolution 24004 with the annual short-term rental license set at $280 per year with renewals of $280 per year. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second to my motion from Trustee Rodden. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Absolutely. Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, item 8C, Village of Swamaco Cemetery. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So the new Swamaco Cemetery Sexton, who is Trustee Rodden, requested that the name of Sexton be updated to Director. This was discussed at the Cemetery Committee meeting last week or two weeks ago, and there were no objections. However, the term Sexton is referred to in our municipal code under Section 2.07, Parent 5, Parent E, and would need to be modified. And this is also an opportunity for us to clean up this section, which was created with a number of nuances back in 2018. For example, committee appointments beginning in April instead of May, and then the designation of the late Robert Vickery to the committee, those things are no longer applicable, so we could strike those as we clean up this section. This is a first reading only. Are there any questions or concerns?
I'm fine with it, but I guess I question, won't Director be confused with Funeral Director?
I think that, I think there's a commonality there. So let's say you lose a loved one, you go and see a funeral director at whatever funeral home, that funeral director will be able to say, "Hey, you're going to go meet with the Cemetery Director from the Village of Swamaco." You know, if you say, "You're going to go meet with the Cemetery Sexton," even some older people that I talked to were like, "What is that, and who is that?" So just a more modern term to utilize versus Sexton, especially with the younger generation, but even just the general public. It's easier for funeral directors to say that. "Hey, you're meeting with us. You're going to go out there, find a plot with the Cemetery Director."
I just, so this was your recommendation to go to Director rather than Sexton?
Correct.
So I would just like to point out potentially what you might be giving up that you might not be aware of. So Sexton, besides its historical value and title...
Very historical.
Very historical. It is defined as a person who looks after a church and churchyard, here's the important part, sometimes acting as a bell ringer and formerly as a grave digger. So two questions for you. Do you have any interest or aspirations in being a bell ringer?
No.
Then I think Director might work. Were you formerly, ever, a grave digger?
No, but Ron here has dug a lot of graves.
Okay, all right. So I guess, be it that you were never formerly a grave digger, it would be difficult for you to be a Sexton to some degree, and you have no aspirations to be a bell ringer, so I would be okay with Director.
And we don't take care of church property either, so.
Right. So I'm okay with this as a first reading. Any other comments or questions?
I appreciate your clarification, though.
Trying to be helpful.
Has this been cleared by the Historic Preservation Committee?
It has not.
They have no jurisdiction over this.
Okay. All right, thank you. That is the first reading, so we'll be revisiting that as well. Okay, moving on to item 8D, possible cancellation of the April 1st Village Board meeting. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So in the same manner of the last topic...
What did I miss?
You missed the other topics regarding the cemetery.
Oh. Yes, cemetery position responsibilities.
I thought they were together.
I got a lot of things going on.
Are these not first readings?
No, so the first one is just the ordinance, and the next is going to be the cemetery position responsibilities.
Okay, would you take us through that, Administrator Kaker?
Yeah, so the committee, the Cemetery Committee worked through updating the position responsibilities, primarily to reflect the operations moving forward, which is, the biggest change is now DPW will be maintaining the property, so cutting the grass and so on. So we wanted to make those updates, and obviously we'll change the word Sexton to Director if that moves through the second reading. director if that moves through the second reading. Just, again, highlighting the different responsibilities of the cemetery sexton slash director, and then staff, and then the committee as well. So the cemetery committee is able to make the recommendation that you update this information, but the village board has the ultimate authority to update this information. So there's a potential motion for the board tonight to either adopt or reject the Village of Swamaco Cemetery position responsibilities as presented. Are there any questions on this document?
I'm a little concerned, because we're duplicating some services. I mean, coordinate the maintenance needs, so basically there's a guy that cuts the lawn, Andy sees, oversees the guy that cuts the lawn, and Dan oversees Andy and the guy that cuts the lawn.
Well, if Dan happens to see something that needs to be corrected, he'll talk to Andy, and Andy will have his crew fix it.
I mean, Ron did it all.
Ron did do it all.
Ron did it all.
I, I see what you're saying, Trustee Eckert. I totally do, but it's, I think it's just, it's just another set of eyes, that if something's getting missed, that it'll just be brought to Andy's attention, for his group of men to take care of.
Yeah, so, I actually put this document together, because we really, we had something kind of just piecemealed together, so I wanted to make sure that everything was laid out, you know, exactly the way it should be. In coordination of maintenance, I don't need to follow behind Andy, or his, or his staff to take care of the cemetery, but I will be out there, when the kids are out there for the fall leaf removal, the spring leaf removal, I will be on site for those activities. So it's just a, it's just really a list of things, you know, making sure the decorations are out in October, if there's tree removals, you know, again, another set of eyes. And really, the cemetery sexton and director, their responsibility is to like, look after the cemetery as a whole.
Other questions or comments? I would offer, if there are no other questions or comments, I would offer a motion to adopt the Village of Swamaco Cemetery position responsibilities as presented.
Second.
Got a second from Trustee Neto.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. Okay. So, we are on to the item 8C3. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So the cemetery committee has recommended approval of the updated sexton slash director compensation agreement, including your packet. The proposed agreement includes a $50 increase, which would now be $100 total for each lot sale, and the cemetery committee is reviewing current lot sale fees, and anticipate recommending an increase in the next several months. We're going to do some more research on neighboring municipalities and their cemeteries, and it looks like we are low, so we'll be bringing that forward to the committee or to the group here in the near future. And so the potential motion for the board is to either adopt or reject the Village of Swamaco Cemetery sexton responsibilities and compensation agreement as presented, or with updates. Any questions on this one?
I mean, again, I have an issue, because we're paying the guy to do the lawn, we're paying Andy to supervise him, and then we're going to be paying Dan to supervise Andy to supervise the guy cutting the grass. This is way more layers of government than we need. And I, and there's compensation, we're doubling the compensation to sell the plots. Where, where is this money taken out of? Is it the general fund, or the perpetual?
No, this is the cemetery fund, which is separate than the general fund, and that's why you would see a corresponding increase to the lot sales in the future, would be my expectation. And again, so, the, the responsibilities of the sexton, which are laid out in this document, is going to be different than what Andy and his crew are doing. So if there's a family that wants to come and visit the cemetery and have direction on, you know, where there are lot sales available, that's the role of the cemetery sexton. The sexton will be working with the funeral director to coordinate any burials. The cemetery sexton will be on site when those burials occur. There's different responsibilities for the cemetery sexton than there is for DPW.
How much does that fund take in every year?
It depends on the year, it kind of ebbs and flows. I think we had about $4,000, $4,500 in sales last year.
Wow.
So you get about 10 lot sales per, per year.
That's kind of sad.
Well, and, and that's one of the things that is actually in one of these. Did I put it in here? I'm just looking at which one it is. Anyway, oh yes, number five, there we are. So, you know, to increase those sales of our, I mean, we have a, we have a gem out there. I mean, I know it's a cemetery, so to say that's kind of odd, but it really is a very unique cemetery, very cool. And the more people I talk to in our community, they don't even know that we have a cemetery. So first of all, is that awareness? But I think, secondly, and I talked to the committee about this, is awareness within the funeral homes in our, our area. You know, that we get an updated flyer. One of the things I'm working on is having NWTC, as a student project, work on a new flyer for us, to advertise and to give those flyers with some of my cards to the funeral homes. So the funeral homes start promoting our cemetery, if they're Swamaco residents. And Swamaco residents don't even know we have a cemetery. I mean, I don't know if you get, did you guys realize we have a cemetery? Do you realize that the plots are only 400? Oh, you've been coming to meetings, but the plots are only $400? I mean, when you say that to people, they're actually kind of stunned. So, you know, it's not, selling a lot for $100, or getting compensated $100 for selling a lot, there's more that goes into it. You know, I'm not, I'm not going to be claiming mileage to, to go to the funeral homes. You know, every time I come and go from, from the, from the cemetery, I'm not claiming those miles. So there's a lot more that goes behind the scenes than just showing up and, and conducting a funeral, or being there during a funeral, a graveside funeral, so.
But you're making $250 a month, even if you don't do anything?
I don't think there's a month that would go by that I wouldn't be doing something. And there may be months that I do a lot more, there may be months that I do a lot less.
I mean, I don't, I'm not saying it should be a big money-making business. This is a village cemetery, but it shouldn't be losing money either.
And I don't think it's going to lose money.
Do we review that each year, at budget time?
We do. Yep.
So, so we could look at the profit and loss, we could look at the expense of the cemetery, and if we needed to make changes in compensation, or changes in, we could make them at that time.
Correct. And the cemetery committee always reviews that, either in June or July, they review the previous year.
And then do they make a recommendation to the board?
If they need to.
If they need to. Does that make sense, Trustee Eckert?
Yeah, but I, I just, I don't agree with it. It's too many layers.
What's the current monthly compensation?
I believe that is, we paid a contract, I believe it was 3,000 per year, so that comes out-
To the same.
Was it 2,700?
2,700.
2,700.
Plus $500 for cutting the lawn.
Which we no longer will have.
So it's a $300, or $300 increase?
For the year, yes. Sure.
When's the last time we had an increase?
I don't think, when's the last time you had an increase, Ron?
Ron's been there.
Have you ever gotten an increase? I think it's been 2,700 for a long time.
I don't ever recall an increase in my tenure.
I don't think, I don't think the cemetery ever really got brought up at the board level, until we actually took it over in 2000.
Last couple of years, yeah.
When we took it over in 2018, that's when we really started seeing anything.
And so, if we're spending 5,000, or 3,000 for monthly fees throughout the year, and if we sell 20 plots a year, it's a $5,000 amount that's earned, what do we bring in if we sell those 20 lots?
What do you mean?
So, well, what's the, what's the net income on those 20 lots? Say, say we sell 20, 20 burial spots, lots.
Well, we sold 10 last year.
Okay, so say we sell, if we sell 10, okay? At $400?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
For residents, and then it's 800 for non-residents.
Okay, so, if we sell 10, at $400, that sounds like $4,000 to me. So, that would basically be break even.
$1,000 to the good.
$1,000, so the 10, the thousand, $100 per plot is the, this compensation.
Right.
So the 10 plots is 1,000, plus the 3,000 base is 4,000.
You're right.
So you've got to remember, there's also other fees involved, too. You have the opening of the grave via the clo, was it just opening and then closing? No, opening of the grave.
And then you have, part of that lot sale goes into your perpetual-
Correct.
Okay, so, looking at just 10 lots, we would actually be running in a deficit, then. If it's $400 comes in per plot, I keep saying lot, excuse me. If, if $400 comes in per plot, and we're paying, we have 10 plots, and we paid $4,000 a year to the director position, then anything else that comes out of that $4,000 that came in, reads as a deficit, then.
Correct. And remember, so there's an ebb and flow to it. Some years we make money, some years we lose a little bit. There is a balance in the operating fund now, I don't know the exact amount, I want to say somewhere around 5,000. So there is some money to, to move up and down. And then again, the committee will be looking at increasing the cost of those-
That's what I was wondering, is how long, how many years have those plots been $400?
At least 2013.
So, good, at least 10 years.
We'll know, we're going to do a comparison to, to all the community cemeteries in the area, along with the, I guess it would be private, I think Fort Howard's a private cemetery, and kind of get an idea and a balance of, of what plot costs are. But definitely, we are on the low side.
And at the end of the day, what this compensation package represents is a 10% increase over what it has been for an unknown amount of time.
But it was 2,700 plus the $500, so that's 3,200, and the 250 times 12 is 3,000, so you're actually a little under, but then you have DPW absorbing your grass cutting. So it's pretty, pretty even.
So the, my statement is incorrect, you think? 300 is wrong? What would you say?
It's, we're, we're going to be, DPW's not going to be charging the cemetery budget, that's going to be assumed in the village-wide.
Okay.
DPW.
So it's the village we're paying for?
Right. So, I think it's close to a wash.
Okay.
The only thing that I need to ask on, if, if you decide to do your motion to adopt, or whatever, I need an effective date stated for when the 250 a month starts, for payroll purposes.
Which that could be whenever-
Yeah, you guys would have to decide.
Director, is the director an employee of the village?
No, technically a contractor.
He is going to be a contractor?
Technically.
So this isn't, all right.
Is, do you, do you ever hear from the associate, the former association members? Has there been any input there?
There is no association.
Okay. I mean, there's still people that have stones there.
Okay.
They would be part of that association, or they were.
So residents, residents who have plots?
Yeah.
At the property?
Yeah.
Does anyone hear any, one from residents who have plots?
I talked to one just the other day. In fact, he has now four plots.
Okay. Any feedback?
Okay.
I, I feel like we're meandering right now.
Okay.
I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned about us talking about, at the board level, increasing or setting fees that would be a change, that is going to end up with a current member of the board.
I'm abstaining from the vote, so you guys can vote however you want.
That's my concern.
Okay. So, have it noted that Trustee Rodden is abstaining from discussion of the vote? Are there any other questions or discussion at this time? Okay. If not, I would, I would make a motion in light, you know, my, my, I would make the motion to adopt the Village of Swamaco Cemetery sexton director responsibilities and compensation agreement as presented.
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Neto.
I would, sorry, I would, I would suggest April 1st as an effective date.
That's fine with me.
Appropriate? April 1st is an effective date? The motion should contain, then, April 1st with an effective date, and that effective date has been seconded by Trustee Neto. Yes, ma'am.
Is he, he's technically still trustee yet, then?
There's, there's nothing that says that you can't be the cemetery sexton and a trustee. If you were to make over $15,000 per year, there's a state statute that that would be an issue, but I don't think you're selling that many plots.
Let's hope not.
Let's hope not. Okay, this is, this is a financial issue, so I would like this as a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden is abstaining. Trustee Romes.
Nay.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
I've got three to two.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then one abstention.
Very good. Okay. So now we are off to item 8D. Are you ready?
We're back in order.
Very good. Item 8D, possible cancellation of the April 1st village board meeting. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. I would appreciate a consideration of cancellation of the April 1st village board meeting, with April 2nd being an anticipated very large election. It just takes the load off our staff that night before, as well as the week prior for village board packet prep. If there is something that absolutely needs attention, and we need to have a meeting, I'll certainly make sure we have it, but would appreciate the consideration of canceling that meeting, tentatively.
Do you just need direction from the board, or a motion?
I'd take a motion.
So, I, I just have a quick question. So, Trustee Rodden, when, when is Trustee Rodden's last, um-
Tonight?
Last meeting?
No, it'd be the second meeting in April.
That would be your last meeting? Okay. That's all I have, just questioning that.
Okay. So, is there a motion, then?
So moved.
And seconded.
So I have a motion to, assuming a motion to cancel the April 1st village board meeting from Trustee Rodden, and a second from Trustee Romes. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are on item number nine this evening, plan, planned commission items. Public hearing, a request from Brian Cuxman to rezone SU 24, located on the west side of Sandberg Trail, at the south end, and south from Brown Road, from Rural Residential to ag zoning administrator Dunn.
Thank you. We are looking at a 37-plus acre parcel here, is currently in ag use and being used for maple syrup production. Most of the property around it is single-family homes with some ag use, and to the south would be our wetland mitigation bank. The subject property has always been in agricultural use, it is likely to remain as such, except for a single-family residential home. At some point in the future, the home would be in allowable use in ag zoning. A proposed building for ag equipment and their maple syrup operations was the driving force behind the rezoning request, as rural residential, the home would be required to be built with or before any accessory building. The portion of property below the stream, the blue line on the map, is part of the wetland mitigation. of property below the stream, um, the blue line on the map, is part of the wetland mitigation bank that the village is in the process of creating to the south. This would never be available for future development. Sewer and water are not available, and there are no plans in the works to service this area at any time in the distant future. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of the rezone, meeting the requirements of all our applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
Other questions for the zoning administrator? None? I would offer a motion to approve.
Can you open the public hearing first?
I could do that.
Or you want me to make that motion?
Please.
A motion to open.
So, actually, I think we can open with public hearing anyway. I don't even know if we need a motion. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item as part of the public hearing? Thank you for the reminder, by the way, Administrator Dunks. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Um, so, public hearing is closed. I don't think we need a motion.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we don't need a motion.
So, now we can go with a motion, thank you.
So, now, sorry to interrupt. So, now you move on to 9B, which is a separate item.
Okay, so, item 9B is action on, um, Brian Cuxman rezoning request for SU 24 from rural residential to agricultural ordinance 2024-05.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance amending the zoning map to rezone parcel SU 24 from rural residential to agriculture as presented.
So, we have a motion to approve the ordinance 2024-05 rezoning SU 24. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second from trustee Romez. Any other further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify.
I'll take a roll call.
I can't get anything right this evening.
Oh, you're doing fine.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romez.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay. Excellent. All right, moving on to item number 10, public works items. Item 10A is the 2023 Consumer Confidence Report. Director Smits.
All right, thank you. Uh, each year, staff prepares what we call our CCR report, which is a consumer confidence report. Uh, this is required by the EPA and the DNR. This report must be prepared by all community water systems in the state of Wisconsin and distributed to all customers by July 1st of each year. So, the last few years, I've been presenting it to you guys at the board level. We send this out to all water utility customers, uh, either in the first or second quarter with their utility bills, and we post this on our village website, and we also submit it to our DNR representative after we sign the certification form. So, the form just defines, um, kind of the operating elements of our water utility, what we're looking for, what we do, and if there was any contaminants or anything that was discovered through the prior reporting year. Everything looks good on here again, and, uh, we'll be distributing this here probably first quarter. No motion required.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so now we are off to item 10B, which is the 2023 MS4 Annual Report. Director Smits.
All right. Uh, the village is required to comply with its municipal separate storm sewer system permit, which is also known as our MS4 permit, or more commonly known as the MS4. This permit requires the approval of an annual report. Village board must take public comments, review, and approve an annual report. The 2023 report must be submitted to the DNR before March 31st of the reporting year. The report details past activities and actions to determine compliance with permit conditions and requirements over the past year. The village currently does meet all of its MS4 permit requirements, uh, so tonight we would just be opening it up for any comment or discussion with anything related to our storm water utility or our MS4 permit. Um, we use this, uh, session tonight as any public information or outreach, or anything that people would like to learn more about it. Um, attached in your memo tonight was all of our yearly storm water activities. Just outlines everything that we do do in a year. Um, most of it is required by our storm water permit, but some things we just do out of good faith of the utility. Um, so if there is any questions, I would be happy to answer anything related.
Are there any questions for Director Smits?
There is, I would be looking for an approval of the annual report.
Do you need a motion to open up for public comment, Andy?
No.
Is that a requirement?
No, not a requirement to open up, but if there's any comment, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 MS4 annual report as presented. Do you want the confidence report, too?
No, thank you.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to approve, um, the, um, annual MS4 report from trustee Rodden. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. Just to make sure, we don't need a roll call on this.
No.
I don't believe so.
Just thought I'd check. It's been a bad night. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, thank you. All right, item 11 this evening is discussion on future agenda items. Anyone have any future agenda items? Nothing? There's no discussion on future agenda items? I would take a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. I'll offer the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
And I've got a second from trustee Andrews. All those in favor of adjourning this evening's meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, thank you, everyone.